Okay, this meeting on the Oyster River School Board will come to order. So if you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we have public comment, just two announcements. Tara Leach will be sitting in for mega duty. Thank you for volunteering for that. And I would also like to just take a minute to thank the teachers and staff who are retiring. And if I could just read their names, I've sent them individually a note from the school board thanking them for their service and really extraordinary service it is. Elizabeth Healy, 36 years of service, art teacher in the middle school. Stephanie Ward, 23 years of service, science teacher in the middle school. Dorothy Wazinski, special education, 15 years of service in the middle school. Alan Stewart, technology teacher, 28 years of service in the middle school. Lou Maraz, 34 years of service, social studies at the high school. Mary Kishbaugh, 24 years of service, consumer education. Louise Stoddard, 19 years of service, special education. Dave Nichols, 35 years, math teacher and also worked within the athletics program. Among the paraprofessionals, Robin Cross, 10 years of service as a paraprofessional. Nancy Sawyer, 25 years of service in the high school. And Moharmit, I'm sorry. Sandra Shepherd, 17 years of service, paraprofessional at Moharmit. Anna Turner, 13 years of service, paraprofessional at the high school. Two bus drivers are retiring. Orin Hakey, 12 years of service. And Ron Ransom, 17 years of service. The custodians, custodian Garth Mitchell, head custodian at the middle school, 17 years of service. And the resident sub and subcoordinator, Steven Sevich, 10 years of service. And also Sarah Walton, who has resigned her position as assistant principal. So I'd just like to thank all of these people for their service. It's extraordinary. People have given essentially their entire professional careers to service in our school system. And as somebody at this point in his own career, I know that there's a sense of liberation and a sense of loss at this time, but for the board, I would like to just wish them the best in their retirement or wherever their careers are taking them. So thank you to all these people. Public comment?
Hi, I'm Luke Schroeder, and I'm an eighth grader at the Oyster River Middle School. And I play percussion in the OMS Jazz Band. And I knew I wanted to be part of the OMS Jazz Band ever since I saw them perform for the first time. I also play soccer, hockey, and lacrosse. I've actually been playing sports since preschool, but since joining Jazz Band two years ago, I learned that being part of a band is just like being part of a team. There's one big difference, though. In sports, you can have a couple of really great players that can carry the team. In Jazz Band, even one member who hasn't practiced is going to affect the performance. That's what spurs each of us to dedicate so much time and effort. I think that's part of what makes the Jazz Band such a unique experience. It's that what makes the OMS Jazz Band performances so great and what makes the experiences so meaningful. And I hope each and every one of you has the opportunity to be part of that experience at our silent movie on June 14th.
Thank you.
And where is that held?
That's at the Portsmouth Music Hall.
Thank you.
And what time is that?
Um.
Seven o'clock, June 14th.
Seven o'clock. Great, thank you.
And tickets can be bought?
Yes.
In the school office? We'll come to that.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jordan Hilliard. I play baritone saxophone in Mr. Irvin's Oyster River Middle School Jazz Band. This is my second year in the band, and I'm going to be a high schooler in two weeks. I have three main reasons why the silent movie is something you can't miss. One, a recent study at Cal State showed that kids were happier while playing instruments than they were at free time. Two, we all love our parents and we love to play for them. It's really nice to play for someone who isn't related to us. And three, silent movie is just great. During the silent movie, we will be playing works from Haydn, Bach, Beethoven, Brahms, Tchaikovsky, and Bartok. So come and listen to happy kids playing to a great movie. And while you're watching the movie, because I know you'll all be there, keep in mind that Harold Lloyd did all his own stunts.
Hello, Steve Green, Lee. I helped organize the silent film event over at the music hall four years ago. My first son was in the Jazz Band, and I saw the film here at the high school to a standing room only overflowing crowd. And I think I might have mentioned to Dave Irvin that I thought it was music or entertainment that people would pay to see. And this is the third year we've been at the music hall. And I don't think I've had anybody disappointed in the price of the ticket or the entertainment they saw. So I want to invite all of you to come. Tickets, this is at the music hall in Portsmouth. Tickets are available through the music hall, through the music hall box office. For a short time, tickets are also available through, if you want to get in contact, to You can contact, and I'll get you through how to get tickets through the Jazz Band. And for a short time, the tickets also will be available at the office over at the middle school. So please, come join us.
Thank you.
The address, silentfilenight@gmail.
What's the movie?
Ah, I'm sorry. So this year, so the program, the events, we start off with a Harold Lloyd film, Safety Lasts, which is truly one of the greats. Then there'll be a brief intermission, and we'll be, the band will come back on to a couple of clips from The Circus, which was a Charlie Chaplin film from the 1920s as well. And then, my favorite part is the band comes on and plays a set from their, from the year, the best of the year. And it really, they do, in the past, have just knocked it out of the park. It's been a great show, so please come.
Thank you. Others? Well, having been to that night a couple of years ago, I thought it was just unbelievable. Just, you know, I've never been so proud of students in this community as what I saw that night.
Me as well. And I've, as the organizer, I've sucked in a couple of colleagues and friends from the outside who were just kind of horrified to be buying tickets to a middle school band event. And to a person, they've all left just absolutely astounded by what happens. And a couple of them have just said, you know, you lose sight of the fact that there's even a band playing. Never mind a middle school band playing. So if, please, join us.
Thank you. Thank you. Approval of minutes? We're going to have a motion to approve the May 21st minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the May 21st, 2014 minutes.
Moved by Al, seconded by Kenny. Are there any corrections?
Yeah.
Denise?
Yeah. Except I'm having trouble calling it up, but, uh, I should print it out. It was when we were talking about, anybody have theirs? Oh, can you scroll down, please? Oh, it's not on yours either.
Here, I can get it for you, Denise.
It was one of my comments, and I know that it was just a little vague in terms of what the intent was, so I wanted to clarify that, but mine is not, it's refusing to actually...
Do you know what it was about? Hold on.
I looked at it the other day, and I thought I took a note, and I can't find it. Somebody, maybe somebody else can go with theirs.
I got it right here. I mean, do you know what it was? You can just scroll down.
Scroll down. Go with the next one, and I'll come back to it.
Other? Maria? Maria?
Yes, on page four, when we were talking about the handbooks. It says, Thoughts on Pledge of Allegiance. I had more than thoughts. I said that I felt it was inappropriate, and I brought it up last year too, inappropriate that the Moharmit handbook says that kids, little kids, have to make arrangements with the principal if they don't want to say the pledge of allegiance. The Supreme Court has already ruled that kids do not have to participate in the pledge of allegiance, so I think that section should be stricken. That was my statement.
So you want the section, the section from the handbook should be stricken?
Right.
Okay. You have that? Laura? Denise, have you found what?
It wasn't that it was wrong, it was just vague, and I just thought it should be clarified, but I am not finding it, so I might just need to pass on it.
Well, I have one in the section where, in the superintendent's report, the minutes, I felt didn't quite capture what Dr. Morris talked about. To me, reading the minutes, it looked like they were one property that was being discussed. And really, there were two properties that were discussed. There was the Jaeger property that you walked with a civil engineer, was found not suitable for fields, and you were going to share that information with Mr. Jaeger. And then the second piece that was being discussed was the district-owned land off of, and I don't know if it was Mill Pond or Mill, Orchard Drive.
Yeah.
And I've had a community member speak with me about that already, so I just wanted to make sure that the minutes were clear. Those are two different properties that were being discussed. The second property is a piece that's owned currently by the district.
Correct. Okay. So the minutes should indicate that the, there are two properties discussed, and that the Jaeger property, is that the way, is that right?
Y-A-G-E-R.
Okay. That property, you know, you were going to go ahead and tell, we weren't interested. Okay. So maybe the minutes should reflect, because that was the...
The Jaeger property, what? I'm sorry.
Was not suitable for athletic field expansion because of the topography and the initial cost of purchasing the property.
Okay. Now, the second property owned by the district was examined, so that there should be two properties, okay? So with that change, is that enough for the change?
Yeah.
Okay. Denise, are you?
Yes, I found it. I apologize for the delay, but it was just under the board goals, under the list of items, concern about numbers. I think it should just be clarified that it was concerned about the number of goals, because I felt like numbers of what? So just number of goals.
Okay.
Instead of concerned about numbers, it should be concerned about number of goals.
Number of goals, yep.
Okay. So do we have that change? Okay, with those changes, we have a vote to approve the minutes?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Six, zero. Ed is abstaining, and Tara, I assume you're abstaining because you weren't here.
Yeah.
Okay. Six, zero with two abstentions, Ed and the student representative, okay? Announcements, accommodations, district?
Hello, Todd Allen from the high school. Actually, I have one, I guess this would fall in the category of announcements, but it's just my time to speak. The board has discussed in the past the idea of when we have overnight trips, trying to break up the approval process into two parts. My world language department is in the process of planning a France trip for next April, and they've discovered an opportunity to take advantage of an early bird discount that they would like to be able to do, that requires them to take action within the next two weeks to be able to do that. And so ordinarily, I would get this on an agenda and give it to you ahead of time, but I wanted to make you aware of it. I do have a handout here for you to have. Basically, the trip is planned, tentatively planned for the last part of April. Their intention is to bring 20 to 24 students, and then obviously, the chaperones and all those things would be worked out in the course of the planning process. But the first step, which is why I'm bringing it to you now, is they need to actually sign people up. And before they start signing people up, I wanted to make sure you were aware of it and that you were okay with us doing that. So I guess what I'm asking is for a, again, a concept approval of the planning of this trip. And then obviously, next, probably next January, when everything is really finalized, I can come forward with you to you with names of kids who are going, chaperones, and all the specifics. But I think this, I'm giving you now, outlines just generally what the plan is. I don't know if...
Do you need a vote, then?
Well, I...
I think conceptually, the idea is to try to do this in two phases so that the board is well-prepared when they're taking action. So I think that a concept approval, that's, yes, I think we would want a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the high school to investigate or to sign up students for the French trip in 2015.
Yeah, it's a long way off. We just barely finished the last trip, so.
Moved by Al, seconded by Denise. Other questions? Maria?
Yes, what would happen to the early bird special? I assume that you have to pay some money upfront?
Right. The idea is you have to get people...
What happens if something happens that the trip doesn't go?
Individuals can choose to purchase trip insurance through the company, and they would be refunded.
Good idea.
Depending on different stages of the process, they get refunded all or some, depending on what point in the process they're at. This is a kind of, we've been doing trips like this for years. These have been very successfully done, time and time again. It's a wonderful experience. Kids come back speaking extremely highly of the time, and it's a, it's a great thing.
Other questions?
I'm just forgetting, what year student is it available to? What level in language?
Basically, this would be for French students.
Oh, so you could be anywhere in the program?
Yeah, you just have to be a French student.
Okay.
Do you have a vote? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Six in favor, seven in favor, student rep in favor. Can you have that authorization?
Excellent, thank you. And then if I could just make a couple of quick announcements, hopefully, I saw Al down there, so I know that you guys saw the senior art show going on down the multipurpose room. If you haven't had a chance to check it out, it will be on display tomorrow and Friday throughout the school day, so please feel free to come by and check it out. And then if you're looking for additional musical entertainment beyond the silent movie, we have our spring band concert and choral concert tomorrow night, seven o'clock in the auditorium. So come and check it out. Thanks.
Dennis Harrington, Principal Moharmit. That sentence is embarrassing. It'll be extracted.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a moment to recognize Christina Dolcino of the Sustainability Committee. There are a lot of us who spend a lot of time working with the Sustainability Committee under your charge, but she has been extraordinary over the last couple of years, and her leadership is just beyond anything that anyone could expect. At the same time, she is an excellent first-grade teacher, and I just thought it time to say something about that. Secondly, I pride myself, although I'm suspicious of pride, in knowing most of what happens at Moharmit. A week ago Monday, I was asked by the two PTO Chias to take a walk with them to the playground. I didn't know why. The unbeknownst to the staff, except for two people, they had organized and constructed a workday that I wasn't invited to, and added to the playground five picnic benches and three benches on the playground to finish off what we weren't able to construct in September. And their remark was, this is a contribution to the children in celebration of the 25th anniversary of Moharmit.
Nice.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a moment to invite you to our last community dinner of the school year, tomorrow night, from 5:00 to 7:00 here at the high school. And it's a barbecue menu with burgers, grass-fed beef, of course, also all-beef hot dogs, also grass-fed beef, and the cattle, some of the cattle grazes right here in Durham. So, and all the fixings. So 5:00 to 7:00, rain or shine, we're going, we're going to be open for business. It's very affordable, $7.00 a person. SAU staff gets a little discount, and $15.00 for an entire family, so it's a good deal. Thank you.
Board announcements, accommodations? Sarah?
I see Karen's not here. I would like to invite all of you tomorrow night, Is Masstway's art show. And it is, I believe, from 5:30 to 7:00. And if you have not been to one of Mrs. Hastings' displays of the Masstway children's art, it really is pretty phenomenal. And I come home every year having a new favorite project. And so, yeah, it's just up, up on the walls. It's a sort of open house, just come, come when you can, just take a look. It's pretty phenomenal.
Kenny?
I just wanted to echo Todd's comment. Got a chance to walk through the art show, and again, amazingly impressed with the creativity and talent that our high school students have. And also wanted to mention and really give amazing compliments to everyone involved in the Power of One presentation, which was put on last week. And four social studies teachers are involved. I believe Dave Hawley, Brian Zottley, Pam Rafer, and a blanking note, and Matt Pappas, I'm sorry. And just walking around, you walk around the room filled with projects. Certainly, some of the students had a prior connection, either through their family or through an experience, but the projects vary. They were social, they were environmental, they were local, they were state, they were national, they were international. And the research they did to learn about what they were hoping to support, the presentation they did, the pride they did in either raising money or raising awareness, I, to me, it's, it's defined so much what I think our education is about. And I think it's a great event, and I wish everyone gets, would get to see that.
Denise?
Continuing with my tours of the school, I, Mr. Harrington took me around Moharmit, and I've got to say that he brought me into his office, and over in the corner, there was a video camera set up in the corner. And I didn't even have to ask him what it was for, because I, and I said to him, I said, "It's your fourth grade interviews, right?" And he said, he assured me it was. And I got to say that, you know, that goes back a really, really long time. And I still have my cassette tape from when he interviewed my son when he finished fourth grade. So just a big thank you for that. Very special memory.
Others? Okay. Is there assistant superintendent report?
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Eastman, Assistant Superintendent. Just a couple things that I wanted to make the board aware of that have been happening in the past month, or a couple weeks to a month. We had a collaboration, Oyster River and Somersworth School Districts. Our curriculum instruction and assessment folks in the area put together and invited David Puck, who is one of the authors of the English Language Arts Common Core, state standards. He lives in New Hampshire. He's a teacher as well at a local high school. He came on May 16th. We had over 80 educators that came together to see him present on text complexity and close reading, 16 of which were from Oyster River Middle School and High School. I'm extremely proud of the collaboration that we have amongst our southeast region as far as curriculum instruction and assessment. He'll be coming back October 16th, because we had a waiting list of people, and the feedback from the event was incredible. Our staff in particular said it was some of the most worthwhile professional development they've attended in a very long time, so. The second piece I wanted to bring up is the Summer Reach, Summer Program, Recreation, Education, Adventure, Close to Home. That's what Reach stands for. It's a mouthful, that's why we call it Reach, but just so we understand the acronym. That is off and running. All the camps are running, and we have, we still have openings, so if people are kind of just getting around to thinking about summer plans, we do have openings. And in the morning, we have, everything's housed in the middle school, and in the afternoon, we have Durham Parks and Rec. That'll be housed at the middle school in the afternoon, doing outdoor activities, which is super fun. And in between there, between 11:00 and 12:00, the cafeteria will be open at the middle school Monday through Thursday to offer breakfast and lunch to students. For those that are attending, and even those that might not be attending our camps, but our students at Oyster River, they can use their accounts. We won't be accepting cash, but we, they can use their lunch account. We had about 30 requests for proposals that came in for summer ideas and innovative work and collaboration among our staff, K-12. Some really great proposals. You know, last year, it was a new concept for the district to think about putting forth an idea that you were really interested in as a staff member and wanted to collaborate around. Last year, I think we had 15. This year, we had about 30. And the proposal just allows staff to really think through the details. What do they hope to accomplish? What are the outcomes? Who are they going to collaborate? What's the cost for their, for the work they're looking to do? We have our Earth, Oceans, and Space course being developed at the high school. We have college application boot camp. We have, the English department is looking at text complexity in some of their essays. At the middle level, we have social thinking, which is continuing from last year, which is about just expectations for students. It started out as an autism group, and they thought, well, you know, this is really good for all kids. And the group is about 20 strong that we've been supporting. This is our second year. We have Hear Me Roar, which is put on by the guidance counselors and offering leadership for seventh and eighth grade girls, and kind of healthy image and strength and positive kind of outlook on life. We have blogging for struggling readers at the middle school. At the elementary school, we have a group that will be intending a week-long course at Kennebunkport, but it's Mahesh Sharma, who offers an intensive math intervention on Common Core and really understanding number at the elementary level. We have 14 that'll be attending that, as well as a group that's heading down to Leslie for a second year to look at literacy. So we have a lot of really great innovative ideas, and these are ideas that the staff generate from staff, and they put together a proposal and submit with a timeline. So I'm really proud of that. Our, another piece, progress reports are coming out June 20th. It's a half-day on June 20th, the last day of school. They will be coming out again, our standards-based progress report. We will be providing support to parents. I know it's the end of school, but parents can come to the SAU office, and I will be happy to help them, eight to four, any day. They can just email me or call. The progress report committee has been working really hard and revamping and altering the progress report. I'm really proud of that work. We really collaborated on a next iteration of the progress report that we all feel really good about, so I'm happy for that. We had a starting place, which was this year, and next year, we're getting closer to where we ideally want to be, so I'm proud of them. And Title I, our new allocation, is $168,000, which is amazing compared to where we were last year. That allowed us to hire, post a position for a additional, or a math tutor, Title I tutor at Masstway. And also, we're putting out book bags, summer reading book bags for all our Title I students to help promote summer reading and mathematics over the summer. And lastly, we have our summer community picnic, Saturday, June 14th, at the high school, under the tent. All the proceeds will be going, it's a free event, but we are serving lunch for $5.00, and the proceeds from lunch will go to End 68 Hours of Hunger, Oyster River. We're excited that all our bands are local Oyster River parents and students. We have one band, the high school band, called One Free Pancake. We have Jam Patrol, which is a middle school band of students. And then we have Fling, which is a band made up of Oyster River parents that'll be performing under the tent. It is 12:00 to 4:00 on the day. There's a lot going on in the district, I think, throughout June. There's a lot going on in the district, I think throughout June, I think we can all attest. So, there's Madbury Day in the morning, there's the community picnic in the afternoon, and then at night, you heard, there's a silent movie. So, I'll be juggling my jazz band player from the Madbury Parade to the, to the community picnic, to the silent movie, to, but it's all really wonderful things that are going on. So, I encourage people to come out and, and experience. And this is the first time we've had a K-12, all-community, all-school event as a celebration at the end of the year. And I think it's a, a really great thing to start. So, thank you.
No report this evening.
Business administrators? Student senate? I don't know.
Yes, I do have a couple of things. So, Tuesday of next week, which is June 10th, the senate members will be visiting the middle school to find students, incoming freshmen that would be interested in running for a class officer position. And on June 18th, the elections for the incoming freshman class office positions, the freshmen who want to run will be taking place. And that, June 18th is also Step Up Day at the high school. So, they'll be coming over for that.
Food service, Doris?
Every year, we're required to do by the, by the state, by the federal government for the National School Lunch Program, a form called the Price Equity Form. And that's to increase prices, to have prices equal to the cost of a reimbursable free meal. Because over the years, people haven't really raised their prices in a lot of districts and it, it ends up that the free meals are supporting the paid meals. So, a few years back, they, they implemented this. When I did our equity form, we came out to an, what we do is take the average meals for the month of October and add it all up and come up with a, an average meal price. And our average meal price was $259, which the reimbursable meal is actually $265. So, that put us just below, and we're almost, almost on the line of being where we need to be. Our current prices are elementary, $240. Middle school is a two-tiered system, $250 and $275. High school is also two tiers, $275 and $3. This was in effect when I came. I found it to be very confusing, not only to students, to parents, to cashiers. I, I found it confusing for myself. In order to bring us up to that rate, I'm proposing a 10-cent increase at the elementary school. So, they'd be at $250. The middle school and high school, I'd like to eliminate the lower tier and just keep it at the higher tier so that all the meals would be one price. I think that we often have, we, we have a lot of choices. And the, the way it works is the menu meal is the lower tier. And then the other meals are higher, at the higher tier. I think that a lot of students who are on free and reduced lunch get the idea that they can only get that one lunch. And, and that's not the way it is. They can get any lunch. And, and I think this will eliminate a lot of confusion as well as bring us up to $265 as an average, if you looked at the meals we did this year. I looked at other districts in the state. I didn't look at them all, but I did find several districts that were at prices, because these are this year's prices or above. For instance, Amherst and Portsmouth both charge $325 for their high school lunches and Concord charges $350. So, we would be at $3.00 next year. I'm not sure what these districts will charge next year. And most schools are about what we are, $275 to $3.00 for high school, $250 to $275 at middle. And almost all were at $250, you know, that I looked at. There were some that were lower. And I think that the, your, your lower free and reduce, your higher free and reduced districts tend to keep their prices a little lower. So, with the fresh food that we're serving, the higher quality items that we're purchasing now, I think, and every salad bar, every school has salad bar now, I think that it's a fair price.
Doris, the Fed's requiring the board to take action. You're looking for a motion?
I am. I, the secretaries really want to finish their handbooks. So, I'm hoping to get it decided so that they can have that.
So, could we have a motion to approve this revised price structure?
I would like to move that we accept the proposed price structure for FY 2015, where elementary school goes from $240 to $250. And then the lower tier, the middle school and high school are both discontinued. So, the, the price becomes what the upper tier was, $275 and $3.00, which this is.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Denise. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. You have your authorization.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doris.
And speaking with the superintendent, he suggests that we, we not act at this meeting on the resurfacing project and the remote television because, put that in the agenda for the next meeting when we'll have a better sense of the budget, where the budget is. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, since it hasn't been moved, we can just move on to the next, next item. So, superintendent's actions, you have some nominations?
I do. In your packet, we have two teaching nominations tonight. The high school has been very aggressive in hiring, going through the interview process, engaging teachers and, and administrators. And so, for tonight, we have two nominations for you to consider. Katie Chagron is a high school math teacher. She's replacing one of the retirees, Dave Nichols. What we budgeted for this position was $69,520. What we have offered Katie is $41,118. She has a bachelor's degree and she's at the beginning of the scale, essentially Step Two. You can see who interviewed her, she's certified. And I had a chance to interview her yesterday with Todd. And I will tell you that I was very enthusiastic. She's got a lot of energy and I think she'll make a great teacher for the district.
Could I just ask what she majored in?
Math.
Oh, good.
And then the second nominee is Gabrielle Anderson for the social studies teacher. She's replacing Lou Marais. His salary was $79,578. Gab comes in at a master's level, Step Nine, at $59,953. Again, Todd used the same interview process, except different teachers, because the content area was different. And she has a master's already from the University of Massachusetts, Amherst, and her bachelor's of arts in history from Ithaca College. And I got a chance to interview her yesterday as well with Todd and another phenomenal candidate. Very exciting to bring these names to you for your consideration this evening.
So, we could either have a motion to accept both of these as a package or we could accept them individually. Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to accept both for Katie Chagron as math teacher and Gabrielle Anderson as social studies teacher.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Discussion?
I just, just question, with the math teacher, so there were 26 applicants, so they put 26 in. That's great.
Yeah, that was a phenomenal number of applicants.
Great. I'm glad to see that.
Ready to vote? Okay, the motion is to approve both of these nominations. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven zero with the student rep voting yes.
Thank you.
Now, lighter stage, so you may have appointments to be made during the summer and you'd like an authorization for us to do that?
Yep, thank you. Every year, the, the board authorizes the superintendent at this point to go forward with the actual interview plus hiring process without bringing them to the board first, largely because we're in competition with other school districts. And as we start to move into the summer, decisions need to be made on a very timely basis. People get multiple offers and so forth. And the board has given me this permission in the past, as well as previous superintendents. And in different districts, I've had the same authority granted to me by the board. You know, the, the issue for tonight is, an example is, Todd almost had a couple more candidates for us to consider tonight, but couldn't quite complete the interview process, reference checks, those kinds of things. And so, you know, tomorrow, if he, if he finishes the reference checks, then he'd be in a position to offer somebody a job. But we're two weeks away from a meeting. And so, we actually lost one candidate in this process because their school system was ready to make the offer right there. So, with your permission and authority tonight, this would give me the ability to complete the hiring process. And what I have done under Maria is brought those names still to you when we meet for affirmation as opposed to confirmation, so that you do get to know who we brought in. You get the same form, but it's mostly just to say, you know, you're, you're giving me your informal blessing as opposed to your formal permission. So, I appreciate that authority again, so we can act on your behalf.
Al?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to offer contracts to qualified teachers and staff during the summer months.
Moved by Al, seconded by Kenny. Because otherwise, you're gonna lose.
Exactly.
Okay. Discussion? Carry a vote? Okay, all those in favor of authorizing superintendent to offer contracts to qualified teachers and staff during the summer months, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. The authorization is given. We've already made a motion to approve the school meal increase. We have to authorize withdrawal from trust funds of scholarship money that's given to students at graduation. So, could we have a motion to approve the withdrawal of scholarship trust funds? Kenny?
Make a motion that we approve the withdrawal of scholarship trust funds.
Moved by Kenny?
This graduating class.
Seconded by Al. Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor. Student rep abstaining?
What?
Oh, I just, is your vote abstaining or did you vote?
Yeah, yeah.
Student rep abstaining. Okay. So, motion, motion passes. And so, we need to pass this around and we need to sign this, this authorization. We have several policies to look at and act on.
You do have the policy summary in your blue folder. I did have one, input from one community member, one on student transportation services, where it says, "So, your revised supervisor to director," but that didn't quite carry through the whole policy.
Okay.
So, we need to, so that's just clerical.
I'm sorry, I missed that, Maria.
On the student transportation service, we agreed to change supervisor to director and that that should carry through the whole policy, but it didn't quite get.
You missed, there's a couple that are missed and then the title.
Right, we missed a few. So, that will be changed.
And the other one to change with that is, in almost every case, you changed vehicle, you changed it, instead of saying bus, you changed to vehicle. And I think there was one that you missed with that, too.
All right.
Okay. Could we have a motion to approve a policy EEA with those two editorial changes? To change vehicle, if we have consistency with those two?
Right.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve it with those two changes?
Yep.
Moved by Maria, seconded by Al. Further discussion on policy EEA?
One more. And I think it was just a, sort of a typo kind of thing, too. You say, as far as responsibility, you talk about the school is responsible until the, and I think it's until the kid gets off the bus on arriving home. And there is principal word closely transferred. Eligibility roots. I had it. It's, again, it's just a typo thing.
Until off the bus, Sarah.
Yeah, just making, because that's what's intended, right? I mean, that the school is responsible until the kid gets off the bus at home.
Correct.
And that.
We'll catch it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Could, you accept that as a friendly amendment? Who proposed the amendment?
Oh, yeah.
Did you accept that as a friendly amendment? Okay.
I accepted.
Okay. Okay. Other changes? Okay, could we have a vote then on policy EEA? All those in favor, please raise your hand with those three editorial changes. Seven in favor.
I voted yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, student rep voting in favor. So, that, that's approved on second read. We have policy BHC, the Board Employee Communications.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy BHC, Board Employee Communications.
Moved by Al, seconded by Denise. I had one question just about, when it says, "The policy should not be used to circumvent the formal procedure agreed to in the master agreement between the board and the guild." Is that formal procedure, the grievance procedure?
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering if that could be put in there.
Drop in the word grievance.
That's the part of the, that's the part of the agreement that it's referring to here, right?
So, insert.
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Because that's, that's the part, I think, section four of the guild.
Right.
Guild grievance, okay.
We're adding the word.
Grievance.
Grievance.
The formal grievance procedure.
Procedure.
Okay? Because that's, that's what it's referring to.
And, and I, I thank you for bringing that at our policy meeting. That was the clear intent.
Okay.
Was that things that came before the board were to be comments, but they weren't things that should have been handled through the guild.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of second read for this policy, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Policy's approved. Policy DFG, suspension of policies?
The feedback that I got from the community member felt strongly and I can see that a core, a quorum of the members present would allow three members, if there were only four people.
Present.
Present, it would allow three members to suspend policies, which is less than half of the board. And, you know, I don't feel strongly about it since it would be a rare or hardly ever happening occasion that we only had four members here. It would, so, but it, it was raised, so I said I would raise it tonight.
Thank you.
And actually, it was something I raised at our policy committee because I was worried that there might be few people here and it would be a chance to abrogate what board policy was. And, and kind of the reassurance was that we don't wind up with four people here and it's not gonna happen. But I, I could see that, that was my original concern.
And also remember that even if that happened, it can be revisited at the next meeting. So, if something, you know, somebody tried, basically you're saying, not you're saying, but basically somebody is inferring that there should be, could some political shenanigans to get you away, but you can't make people absent. And if you, if you weren't happy with a policy change at one meeting, you have the authority to revisit the policy at the very next meeting.
And just, and, but, and one of the problems was, let's say we specified two-thirds of the total board, whether they were there or not. If there happened to be a meeting, let's say where one or two people were there, then you, you couldn't get that number. So, it was kind of balancing the two out was the problem. So it was kind of balancing the two out was the problem.
Sarah?
I have to say, I was, I knew the goal was to make it simpler, because we were all lost in it originally. I was a little concerned with the idea that the written piece was taken out of it. You know, in the bottom paragraph, it talked about that it needed to be described in writing. And I guess the only difference that made for me is a processing piece, whereas if you see it visually and you read it, you might process it one way, whereas if you're listening to it, the processing piece is different. And I'm very non-auditory, I'm much more visual. So that piece made me a little uncomfortable to take out the writing piece and the, it didn't have to be unanimous. But then hearing you say, well, you can always revisit it at the next meeting, if you all of a sudden went, oh, my God, I didn't mean to do that, then I can live with that.
I'm trying to think what, you know, in terms of suspension of policy actually occurring over the last two years, I mean, the only thing that we've, and isn't that, you're like policy, there's another policy where we try to.
It was my evaluation, Al.
Yeah, that was. The timing of the evaluation.
And also the right, the, some of the things that we.
The right to know. I think that was like we suspended, but.
To have second reads.
It's pretty rare, and it's, and I just, you know, I'm, again, I'm trying to think of us having a meeting with four people would be very unusual.
Not happened in my tenure.
Yeah, I'm almost wondering at that point, if, would you reschedule the meeting of the board or something? I mean, if you had that few people.
Well, if you had a quorum of the board, you wouldn't reschedule, because it's a public, noticed meeting. But at the board meeting, with only four people present.
You'd just table it.
Any issue that might cause concern can be tabled to the next meeting. So again, you know, you'd have to assume, I think, the worst of people as opposed to the best of people, and people generally want to do their best. So if anything came up that sort of felt uncomfortable, I'm pretty sure whoever was present would say, can we just wait till we have a bigger number of members present?
And I think that the, the kinds of policies that can be suspended according to Robert's rules are quite limited. You know, that, that you can't, you know, my understanding is you couldn't just suspend the policy at its class size or something. You're suspending a policy by your own procedures.
Exactly.
So that's a very circumscribed set of things. And then once you suspend them, you know, the next, they're just suspended for that meeting.
Right.
So it isn't like you're going to make a change that's going to carry forward. You're making a change in your procedures so that you can take action that you think is necessary, and there's some, some procedure or policy that's going to keep you from doing that. So you're going to suspend for that meeting so you can take that action. That's my understanding. And so there's all kinds of things that you can't suspend, like you can't suspend the size of a quorum, you know. You can't say, for example, that Ed should have been allowed to vote in the last meeting because he wasn't, you can't take that kind of action. So it's very circumscribed, is my understanding. So.
Would it be just as effective to say five members of the board?
Well, I think that's.
That's what that says. I mean, you could just change it, instead of two-thirds majority, say five members. I mean, I can, I hear what you're saying about the policy, but it would just get rid of that concern that for any shenanigans.
So the opposite side of the shenanigans in that regard, Ed, would be that somebody deliberately, or two of the members deliberately decide not to be present.
Oh, right.
And you might recall that in, what is it, Wisconsin, the Senate Democrats all crossed the state line in order for the majority to be able to do their job.
Yeah.
So, you know, it makes sense to do the majority of the members present and trust your colleagues that, you know, it's not going to be anything bullish that happened.
I guess I just wanted to say again, through all the kind of discussion we've had here, it's why I felt comfortable with the language that's in it. I thought that this will enable us to do our work. I don't think we're going to be undermined by any kind of devious behavior, and that's why I support this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy BGF, suspension of policies.
As written, or?
As written.
Moved by Al, seconded by Kenny. Further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Policy KHB, advertising in schools. Few changes, right?
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy KHB, advertising in schools.
Moved by Al, seconded by Denise. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in.
I just wanted to point out that I think one of the big changes was, through our discussion at the board table, was making sure that any kind of signage advertising was really in line with our wellness policy, as well as our sustainability policy. And I think that's really key.
So we have a motion, right, and second? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Motion approved on second reading. We have Teacher Performance and Evaluation System, policy GCO. Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy GCO, Teacher Performance and Evaluation System.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al. Discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Approved on second read. And we have two policies for deletion, right?
Three.
Three? Okay, policy BHE.
This is an R, don't.
R should not be there.
But just policy BHE, you want to delete?
No, it's in BH, the, that should not have been there at all. It's BHR. What we're saying is the contents of BHR already exist, and policy BHE, so we want to keep BHE. So that should not have been there, I'm sorry. It is two to be deleted, HE and GCKB. There's no action necessary on BHER.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything there?
No.
Okay. H, policy HE, motion to delete policy HE. Al?
I'd like to make a motion to delete policy HE.
Moved by Al, seconded by Kenny. Discussion? All those in favor of deleting policy HE, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Okay, then we have policy GCK, let's take the eye test, GCKB. I'm going Kenny. On meetings? To be deleted? Al?
I'd like to make a motion to delete policy GCKB.
Moved by Kenny. Moved by Al, seconded by Kenny. Discussion? All those in favor, please.
We have a question for them.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So it says, this policy is obsolete.
Mm-hmm.
Is it not anywhere? I mean, is there no, like, this doesn't seem unreasonable, that teachers shall be required to attend all meetings called by the administration. So obsolete, why?
Question, I don't have it in front of me. I can't remember the conversation.
It says, so the policy is teachers shall be required to attend all meetings called by administrative or supervisory personnel, except when excused personally by the person calling the meeting. Discretion in the call of meetings should be taken to avoid unreasonable demands upon teacher time.
It's in the contract.
Okay, that's right, thank you.
Thank you for reading. I was taking.
All those, further discussion? All those in favor of deleting policy GCKB, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. That takes care of policies. Okay, committee updates?
There was a summit meeting for sustainability last night at the Durham Library, which was a meeting to get together various groups in the community interested in sustainability, and that included the Oyster River Sustainability Committee, as well as a number of church groups, the Conservation Committee, Parks and Recreation, Waste Management, and probably missing a number, a couple of other ones that were there. But the goal was to kind of get all these different groups with similar interests together to, you know, sort of to know what everybody's doing and kind of combine resources, and so we don't duplicate tasks and join forces. And it was, you know, about 50 people were there, it was very productive, and there was a lot of interest in, you know, reducing waste, recycling, composting, kind of things you'd think about. But it was very nice to see all the different people kind of coming together to put it into one place and share common ideas, or share a lot of ideas and common interests.
Okay. Denise?
The Long Range Planning Committee met on May 22nd, and Allison Mueller, who is a real estate agent in the area, came and talked, and it really provided some useful information. Forty-nine closings have taken place as of, in the first five months of this year, which is, there were 50 last year. So we're basically on par with where we were last year. So we talked about, you know, how that translates into kind of the bump that we have, you know, last year, and we're, one of the things that we talked about was having the SAU office send out letters to all new homeowners, welcoming them to the district and encouraging them that if they have children, to register them as soon as possible. So that was sort of one of the ideas that we had, to avoid the last minute, you know, not realizing students, you know, just having as much lead time as possible if there are new students that are going to be registered in the district. And then our next meeting, I know that the principals will be attending, and the meeting, it was June 19th, but I know that's been changed to the 24th? 24th?
So Denise, was her sense that last year's, was it anomaly, or that this, the pattern is the same this year, so this same kind of bump might occur?
Exactly, exactly. Because in terms of the number of closings so far this year, I mean, there were, at the same time last year, there were 50, this year there were 49. So basically, the same number of houses are being sold right now. The one thing we don't know is, you know, who's buying those houses? I mean, is it, you know, you know, couples without children?
They know, like, I mean, it's like some kind of weird violation of privacy, but do they, do they know if they're families that are moving? Or is it just?
Yeah, that was, we did talk about that a little bit, but the, we don't know. And the one thing that we, we just talked about was if a letter went out to every new homeowner.
I got that communication, and we're working on it now.
Yep.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, that at least if there are children there, we would know about them sooner rather than later. So that was the one thing. And then there's also, I was trying to think, it wasn't on the official minutes, but a number of houses that are, like, on par to close. I mean, it was, it was a pretty significant number. So 32 are under contract. So in addition to the 49 that were already closed, there were another 32 that were under contract. So, yeah, a lot of houses being sold.
Kenny?
But, you know, the, some context, though, I think is needed, too, because it's, it's not just who's coming in, but who's leaving.
Right.
So if families with school-aged children are leaving, and they're replaced, it's a net wash, so that, that is also important.
Did Allison suggest anything like sending letters to the local, the real estate agents that actually sell the homes to, so that they could perhaps take a few seconds and drop us a note saying, we sold a, you know, we sold a home with three children.
Right.
And who sold it to had no children, or vice versa?
Yeah.
Did that come up at all?
Yeah, no, that, that didn't come up, but that would be another idea, possibly.
Be very helpful.
That was for the whole Oyster River, that wasn't just Durham, that was Lee Madbury?
Yes, that was for the district, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll stay tuned. Important work.
Yeah, it was, it was really, you know, and she offered her services, you know, it's like anytime, you know, to help in terms of trying to get a better handle on enrollment in our district, so. Informational meeting, for my first meeting.
Yeah, it's a very powerful committee, very analytical. They do a really great job.
Yeah, you've got to be upping your math. Regression ratios, yeah. Committee reports? Public comment? Hearing none? Okay, next meeting will be the 18th, and there'll be some manifest meetings that'll be scheduled over the summer, right? There'll be three of them? Okay. And do we have the dates on those, or is that, is it on our schedule? Okay. Okay, those will be at 5:30, don't we decide? Okay. Okay, motion adjourned?
I just, when Carolyn was talking about the collaborative workshop that was done with the Summersworth Schools, and it just jogged my mind that some people in the community have asked about how the integration process for Barrington students coming to Oyster River. And I think specifically, the question, since that number will be increasing, how are the curriculums aligned? What kind of work there is? And I don't know if that's something it's worth presenting to the board at some point, or?
We can add it to the list. I assume that the curriculums aren't aligned, because they're two different school systems.
Right.
But I think the more, the question that we control is what's the transition process?
Right.
So that's something that Todd and Heather could report on.
Okay. But I think the, the kind of feedback I was getting, that it might, Barrington might feel it desirable to try to align better, knowing that a greater percentage.
Well, it's actually in our agreement that we would, we would work toward collaborating curriculum, curriculum content, we would, we would work on collaborating on PD, professional development. So it's actually part of the agreement. Superintendent Barrington is very, very open to that idea.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Further comments?
Well, now I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, moved by Kenny. Seconded by Al. All those in favor of adjourning, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Adjourn.
I can do it with all this extra time.